I call to order the Gladstone City Council's special meeting for November 27, 2018 at 6:31 PM. Tonight, we're here for the following items: our consent agenda to certify the results of the November 6, 2018 election, and Resolution 1151, City Administrator Employment Agreement Amendment. We're going to be talking about the sewer rate study and mutual agreement in order, which is an informational session; second reading of Ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, regarding temporary structures; contract amendment to the American Institute of Architects, also called AIA; document agreement for the Gladstone Civic Center; City of Gladstone's second amendment to the Personal Services Agreement for Project Management of the Gladstone Civic Center project with Shields O'Bletz Johnson; council representative for the Willamette Falls Locks Project, and discussion of the fire chief and police chief recruitment process. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Milch?
Present.
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Eisner? Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple? Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
First, I'd like to call up Police Chief Jeff Jolly.
Your Honor, Council, Ms. Betts, and citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to sit here before you. As you know, I'm going to be departing for a job in Washington. I could go on for an hour about how much I appreciate this community and love this community. In that vein, we have a void in which we need leadership to continue guiding this department. And I believe Ms. Betts has found the perfect candidate. I'm going to introduce Kim Yamashita. She comes to us having served, and still serving, for the previous two years as city manager of Sandy City. Before that, she served seven years as their police chief and has an extensive history and career in law enforcement. And also, I would like to note that she's a veteran, having served in the US Air Force and retired after a great and stellar career as an E-7. She has a great educational background, including a master's degree, and I can continue to go on and on and embarrass her. She is someone that I have used as a mentor when she was police chief at Sandy, so I'd like to introduce Kim Yamashita.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Betts, for reaching out to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions or meet with any of you one-on-one or together at any time. I'll always have an open door for you, so if you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to bring them to me. And I'm just here to serve in any capacity that I can.
So when's your official first day?
January 1st.
January 1st. All right. And we will swear her in here on January 8 with the new city council. Okay. Are you going to be around at all before then?
Yes, I'll make myself available. I have commitments to the City of Sandy as well, and I've discussed it with Mayor King and Ms. Betts, and we can work out whatever we need to work out. We'll job-share, and you'll share me for a little bit.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome aboard, and thanks for the help.
Yeah.
Reach out anytime.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you want any comments?
We're good.
We're good.
Thank you.
Okay, so since this is a special meeting work session, it's a little bit more informal than normal, so I want to clarify a couple things before we continue. Folks seem to think that we're up here doing some sneaky things and being a little surreptitious in the way we handle the business of the city, and I want you to know that it's my policy that the first meeting of the month is our regular meeting. I want to make that clear. The first meeting is our regular meeting, and that's our standard business and also business from the audience. I've expanded the public participation in that first meeting to not only be at the beginning during business from the audience, but to also allow people to speak on the specific agenda items. The second meeting in the month has been work sessions or special meetings. Usually, it's we have some time-sensitive information that we need to digest or discuss. This meeting does not include the public participation, and again, it's generally a little bit more informal. We usually sit around a table instead of up here, and that's the way that we're going to continue to do it moving forward. It seems to work really well. Secondly, there's some misunderstanding on what a public hearing process is, and I don't know if it's we're not getting the message out or what we have to do so that people understand. There's certain topics, like ordinance revisions, that require us to follow a specific format, and this includes a public notice, a lengthy public notice, public testimony at a regular city council meeting. This means that, well, hold on. Once the public testimony is done, the council votes on closing the public hearing, and this means that the public hearing is closed. No more emails, testimonies, any of that. The public part is done. The council then votes. If it's unanimous, then we can follow that up with the second reading. If it's not unanimous, then the second reading is held over until the next meeting. During that time, we discuss it at times between us, maybe ask the staff questions, but the public testimony piece is done. Nothing that's submitted during that time, am I correct, David, is to be considered? It's closed.
Correct, yeah. That's right.
Okay. And then we come in and do the second reading. So there's some misunderstanding. People got some bad information. I'm really sorry about that. We'll make sure that the process gets out. If we have to have a community meeting, a community discussion, we're willing to do that. So please be respectful. Keep the side conversations and comments to a minimum if you could. I'd appreciate everyone's help in keeping this session productive and positive, and mostly to the point. So the first item is the consent agenda. Staff, discussion, comments?
No. And you do have a copy of the certified election results. As we noted, those came in after the packet was printed, so they're there before you.
Would someone like to make a motion? Or we have any discussion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Regular meeting, the first item, is number three, sewer rate study and mutual agreement in order.
This will be a conversation, and Public Works Director Jim Wynot will lead that conversation and introduce his guests.
Good evening, Mayor Stimple and Council. We're here today to talk about our sewer rate study that we had done earlier this year, and also to talk about a mutual agreement order that we're in conversation with DEQ about. Who I have with me today is Tiffany Yelton Bram. She's with the Oregon DEQ, and she's here to talk about their role in protecting the water in the state of Oregon. I want to start out with a little bit of history, which I'm sure everybody is aware of that, but just kind of set the stage and bring us all up to speed. And we all know that the city's been going down this, kicking the can down the road for many, many years, 30-plus years from my understanding, in all of its infrastructure. And just recently, the city updated its sanitary sewer master plan. That was late last year in '17, and from that, we did a rate study based on, you know, based on the projects listed in that master plan. Shortly after our rate study was done, DEQ contacted us regarding our continued sanitary sewer overflow to the Clackamas River. This is not a new thing. This has been going on for quite a while. As a matter of fact, the city's been fined before for this, I think going back as far as 2011. So there's a long history of our sewer system overflowing to the river. And just to kind of let you know how that happens, the sewer system's designed in such a way that when it backs up, before it starts flowing backwards into people's homes and businesses, there is a controlled overflow down at the Clackamas River, so it overflows to the river before it backs up into everybody's basements and such. So that's kind of, that's what's happening. Our system's getting inundated with rainwater, groundwater, from leaky pipes and such, and it just, it can't handle it, so it gets overloaded, and we overflow to the river. As a matter of fact, a couple of years ago, we overflowed 10 times in one winter. It was a pretty gnarly winter, but still, it's not a good place to be. And with that, having conversations with DEQ, they have offered to work with us, come up with an agreement, a mutual agreement in order is what it's called, MAO, and I'll turn it over to Tiffany to kind of talk about DEQ's role in that and kind of how these things work.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Stimple and Council, for having me here tonight. So I am a Water Quality Manager with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and I work out of our Northwest Regional Office, which covers six counties in sort of the metro and north coast area. And our job in the water quality program is to implement federal and state laws regarding water quality. And so we set standards to determine what pollutant levels cause harm to humans and cause harm to aquatic life, and we implement those standards through permits. Now, the City of Gladstone does not have a permit for sewage directly with DEQ because your sewage is actually conveyed through your collection system to sewage treatment plants primarily owned by Water Environment Services. So what we, so we instead are looking at the collection system, and the fact that the collection system has overflows that go directly into the Clackamas River where raw sewage and anything else conveyed through the collection system can go into the river. Bacteria, which is conveyed when these overflows happen, of course, is unhealthy for humans, so if there were people recreating in the water, they would be exposed to it. It also contributes to the algal blooms and other things that can happen in the water. So we, of course, want to make sure that those things get controlled. So we've had conversations with Mr. Wynot and his staff about approaches to doing that, and the approaches have to do with looking at the collection system, finding places where it's leaky, keeping unnecessary stormwater out of the sewage collection system, and making it less likely to overflow. We have these kinds of conversations with lots of other cities. This is a problem that develops over time, and it's a problem that we work with lots of communities to control. And when we do a mutual agreement in order, it is an enforcement action. As Mr. Wynot mentioned, we have actually penalized the city in the past. We'd prefer not to continue to penalize the city. Instead, come to an agreement with set time period and set action steps so that we can see some improvement towards having a reduction in these overflows.
Questions on that piece?
What's the penalty?
Well, in 2011, we penalized $4,000. I think, I don't remember what the one was in 2014.
It was $6,400, I believe.
Thank you.
It's going up.
Yeah.
And it will continue to go up.
So you have the ability to make those much higher or to mandate corrections, or is that something we're going to listen to in a bit if I'm jumping the gun?
Oh, so we could, you know, we could take an enforcement action and just unilaterally require an action and unilaterally require a certain penalty. But what we'd rather do in this case, because we've had conversations, we understand the situation that the city's in, we'd rather have an agreement between us so that you can put your money towards improving the system overall, and that we have things that are measurable in that agreement.
So another thing that this mutual agreement order does is it's going to pause any penalties on the city as long as we are meeting the steps in this mutual agreement order. So it kind of puts us on in a holding pattern after this point. We still have this last incident that we still have to deal with, but for the next five years, we're putting together a five-year plan. It's going to help protect the city against those as long as we're doing what's in this plan. So that's kind of the goal, and it's moving in that direction if I say that correctly.
Yeah. Now, a third party, such as an environmental group, could still, overflow could happen, and they could still file a third-party lawsuit under the Clean Water Act. But if we have a mutual agreement in order in place, their case isn't as good as if we did not.
And so we're finalizing that now. That'll probably be coming here in the next month or so. We've been working on this for several months now, and we're kind of bouncing back and forth and coming up with a reasonable plan that works good for the city. So you guys will be seeing that from us soon. The next part of this is talk about the rate study. The rate study that was done earlier this year was, like I said, is based on the capital improvement projects in the 2017 water, or sanitary sewer master plan. Those projects total $28 million. That sounds like a lot of money, and it is. In that study, it shows six different options for funding. Those options range anywhere from doing nothing to doing all the projects in a 20-year timeframe, which is the most aggressive. And then there also talks about pay-as-you-go options and issuing debt to get the projects done, all this other stuff. And this is the stuff we'll get into more detail when we meet in February. Once we have the mutual agreement in order in place, we can kind of find out what that is going to cost to meet that mutual agreement in order and kind of get a baseline, so then you have some better information to kind of figure out where we want to, where the city wants to go with this. So that'll be coming once we get this, the mutual agreement in order in place, and then we're anticipating meeting towards the end of February and having a work session to talk in more detail about rates on all of our, all of our infrastructure, as a matter of fact, not just sewer. This is not just a sewer thing. This is, this is the city's infrastructure as a whole. So once that's finalized, we'll get together with you and have more discussions about this. Part of that plan is also going to include public education and outreach, similar to when we implemented the stormwater utility just a couple of years ago. We did some, some pretty heavy public outreach and education on that, and it seemed to go pretty good. Also, just as a comparison, I know you guys see this every year, we put it out, and we'll be updating it here after the 1st of January, is just some of our rate comparisons. The city's right around us. So a total utility bill, if you live in Gladstone, you're paying approximately $64 a month, and that is the average rate, single-family home. So if that same, single-family moved into Oak Lodge Water Services District, they'd be paying $97 a month. It's about a $33 more a month. Westland's $99, Oregon City's $118, and Milwaukee's $126 a month. So just to kind of try to put some things into perspective where we're sitting and kind of just set the base, and you'll be seeing a new one of those come out after we, after the 1st of the year when we increase our sewer and water rates by the already-planned 5% and 10%. And then 5% and 10% sounds like a lot, but it's like 49 cents in sewer. I mean, so it's, it's, I'd probably rather use the dollar amount because
Sounds better.
It's more, more real. Anyways, with that, if you've had a chance to look through that rate study, and if you have any questions on it, I'll do my best to answer them. Yes?
Two questions. One, in looking at all the data that's put together through the year 2027, it shows the rate increases by year
Yes.
Through that. In 2020, each area of the rates, it shows a huge difference from the prior and after and succeeding years.
Yes.
Like, compared to 5 or 9, it may be 145 or whatever. How come the rate has increased so much in 2020?
So what they, the consultant that put this together, what they did is they, they looked at everything over a 20-year period, but they gave you a 10-year snapshot. And the idea was, based on all those different scenarios, they, they did an upfront bump to get you going, to get, to get the funds coming in to start doing projects. If you were to even out the rate increases over the whole 20-year period evenly, it would be probably year seven or eight, or maybe 10, before you build enough funds to start doing the projects. So that was the way it was explained to me. I'm not a rate, you know, consultant, but that's the way it was explained to me because I asked the same thing.
So the rate is going to increase, we'll say, 145% in one year versus 5% the year before that, and 9% the year after that?
Right, in some scenarios, but these are just some options. These are not, oh, you have these six options, and that's all you got. You can, you can phase out that first one and phase it out over two or three years if you want. All it means is it's going to push, it's going to push some projects off because you're not going to have the funds available for a few more years to do the, do the projects. So then you, if you're going to do, try to do the projects over 20 years, it's just going to, it's going to bunch them all up.
Okay. The second question, I'm assuming, and I'd like you to clarify that, that if we follow the master plan the way we think things will work, theoretically, any fines in the future whatever from DEQ, okay, will not be there, because we won't be fined because we've met our requirement for that year's period of whatever, long it lasts.
Well, it's, it's not whether we do what the master plan says, it's whether we stop the overflows to the river. And the master plan does talk about projects that will help mitigate that and get us, the master plan was designed to eliminate that, eliminate the overflows of the river based on a five-year storm event. And they did all the modeling and stuff that if you did these projects, that's what really triggered a lot of what these projects are required, like the big storm line going down Portland Avenue, the I&amp;I work, the getting the stormwater catch basins off the sanitary system, smoke testing, getting rid of downspouts from homes connected to sewer system. I mean, there's a laundry list of stuff in there that is going to get the city to where they're not overflowing to the river to meet that five-year storm event, if, hopefully that helps.
So then our priority capital improvement projects should align with what the MAO is going to require?
Yes, exactly. As a matter of fact, that's what we've been working on, is trying to identify projects in there that are, that are really targeted toward this overflow. So we have, we have part of our system, about a third of it, going to Oak Lodge Water Services. There's issues there as well, but the ones that are really overflowing to the river, we really tried to hone in on what are the big-ticket items there.
Okay.
And quite honestly, the biggest ones that are in there, it talks about eliminating stormwater catch basins off the sanitary sewer. That's, that's like low-hanging fruit, and that's, that is one of the items that are in there. And then there's some studies in there to study where is the rest of this water coming from.
Yeah.
So that's, in a nutshell, that's kind of what it is, but of course, it's going to be five or six, maybe 10 pages, so there's still some work going on with that.
Of course.
So my question is similar to the mayor's, I think. So even if we didn't have this problem of overflowing into the river, we still have a very aging, neglected infrastructure system.
Yes.
And because it's under the street, most people don't know about it, don't really appreciate the significance of it, yet it's probably more important to people's daily lives than, than the streets and the things that we can see.
Yes.
You know, if a street breaks down, you can find another street to get to work or get to your job, or, you know, whatever you're doing. If the sewer system breaks down and you have backups, or you don't get fresh water coming into your home or whatever, that's far more dangerous and has life affecting. So you're able to identify, though, in addressing the entire system and the need to improve it, you're able to identify those things which do address the issue of the overflow into the river, and you can focus on those first without really throwing off the whole general system upgrade that you would be doing?
Absolutely. They are, the sewer master plan even rates those as, in your first five years. It's broke down into first five years, five to 10 years, and on down in the master plan. And in that first five years, it identifies this low-hanging fruit. I mean, I like to give credit for it, but I'm, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We are actually utilizing that master plan and the studies that were done, and what is the low-hanging fruit? Where do we target first to get the biggest bang for the buck in a sense? And another way to look at it, Water Environment Services is in the middle, doing their master plan, and they're also trying to figure out at what level do you, what is more cost-effective? Do you build plant capacity, put in bigger lines, bigger pump stations, and all this to treat all this rainwater? Or do you spend money on eliminating the rainwater, groundwater, from the system? And long run, it's going to keep the rates lower because you're not, just think today, this, all this rain, we're treating all that water. We didn't overflow to the river, but we're treating massive amounts of rainwater. Our, our summer flows from our winter flows are just, it's ridiculous how much more they are, so that's leaking pipes. We're treating all that water. It costs money. So in the long run, if you, if you look out 20, 30, 40 years, it is, it's crazy not to, this is the most cost-effective thing to do is to fix your pipes. It really is.
So the benefits-to-cost ratio for doing that, what you call the low-hanging fruit, the things that immediately affect the stormwater getting into the sewer system
Yes.
Is, is very high.
Yes. Okay.
Counselor Tracy, you've got lots of highlights there.
Okay, time's up. No, I'm kidding.
So I think one of the things, and maybe you would agree, Mayor, is that when we, when we do go on this course, because you have these different rate structures, Director Wynot, I mean, we have to be able to talk to the citizens about these rate structures,
right? Absolutely.
To Counselor Mercero's point, I mean, you have a 145% increase on the rate, right, on this one scenario, that's the million-dollar CIP scenario. We've got a 400-plus or 445% increase on rates at year 2020 on another. I'm, I'm a person who likes the backstory because I think that for us to be able to discuss this with knowledge to our citizens, we need to know what kind of happened over the last 40 years. And we're probably going to be relying on you to, it's not a finger-pointing exercise, but it's information, right? This is, this is a system that if it fails, to your point and to your point too, Tiffany, is that if this system fails, this is a public health hazard potentially, and
Right.
Counselor Mills made that point. We're going to have to pay for it some way. And when I was going through this last night, I don't know what that way is exactly, because these are rate increases that we've heard enough, we've heard a lot about rates, have we not?
Right.
These are substantial rate increases to basically patch and repair deferred R&amp;R on a system that is deferral over the lifespan of a system. I have a hard time understanding that.
Yes, well, a good example
Not finger-pointing, don't understand it.
Yeah, go back 30 years. These, if we go look at our last master plan, it was in the 90s, I believe, maybe in the late 80s. I don't remember exactly when it was, it was a long time ago. If, these projects were identified then. If we had, if this city had started working on them then, putting a pipe in today, you know, going down the road, is five times the cost nowadays. I mean, so it's, you got to start someplace, and the system's getting to the point where if we don't do it now, 10 years down the road, it's going to be, how much more expensive to lay that thing?
Right, which goes to, I mean, we're looking at 10 years down the road, are we not? I mean, so we don't even know. I mean, we know what the capitalization is based on forecasted
Right.
CPI and other, other indicators, but this gets more expensive every time we talk about it and not do something.
Right.
Does it not?
Yes. No, absolutely, yeah. And so what I plan on doing is, once we get the MAO in order, is I want to come back with a lot more information.
Right.
Here's, here's what we need to do minimum to meet the MAO. You know, we already see what we need to do if we want to do the, the master plan in 20 years. That's, that's pretty aggressive. There's, there's that 420% is pay-as-you-go, no financing. Now, understand, if we do any financing in this city, we have to go up the vote of the people. We cannot finance without that. So that's why I asked, put in what it would be if we didn't finance, and that's why that ridiculous, that 420% is in there. And we talk about these percentages, kind of like I mentioned earlier, for example, that 145% you had mentioned, that's a big number. Dollar-wise added, that's just under 15 bucks a month
Right.
For a home. So I mean, our rates right now are $9.60 for sewer collection. Granted, there's a piece of that that is a pass-through that goes to the treatment, which is more than that, but the, we're talking about the city's portion. We're not talking about a percent on the whole bill. We're talking about that $9.60. What's a 100% rate increase on that? You know, I mean, so that's, that's what we're really talking about, to kind of put things into perspective. We're not talking about the $60 monthly bill. We're talking about that $10 piece of it.
Right, and do, we don't have the EFU costs that, like Oregon City does. Oregon City, I think they have for, per unit is around $78 or $80 a unit. Is that correct? What are we charging, you know, on the EFU?
I don't know what they charge per EFU, but I do have, like I mentioned earlier, I do have what their monthly bills are.
Okay.
And so for their sewer over there, their wastewater, they're charging, over in Oregon City, is $55.68. Here, with the treatment included, we're at 33.
Okay.
And they pay basically the same treatment.
Yes, because we're going to the same place, are we not?
Exactly, exactly. It's very close. It's not exact, but it's very close. So that's why I wanted to show those comparisons, because we are literally, the next cheapest utility bill around us is $33 a month more.
And this is 28 million in lieu, I mean, there's, there's another chunk there, too, on the Public Works Infrastructure and Conveyance. Is there not another dollar amount that's?
Okay, so this is sewer.
This is sewer.
So never got sewer.
That's what I'm saying. So you have the rest of the
So you have, the rest of the conveyance system is also in trouble.
So one of my thoughts coming back in February is to come back with a phased-in, which we have been doing for the last couple of years, phased-in, sustainable approach. And I just don't know exactly what that is yet until we get this finalized, kind of set the bar at the minimum, and we can start talking about the other ones. And I, we really plan on having a pretty in-depth work session in February to really go into details. In 2014, we did a water and sewer, or water and storm rate study based on those master plans. And now we have a sewer, sanitary sewer rate study. So we have the information now. We just kind of need to have some conversation about that. And I need more information.
To be able to-
Oh, absolutely.
Well, you'd mentioned West and efficiencies where if we would separate our stormwater from our sewer, that the efficiency may be felt at the end where they wouldn't have to increase the size of their plant.
Yes, absolutely.
So are they at the table talking to us about?
Matter of fact, they're here tonight to watch this, so, yes. So, no, they are. We have, we have been having conversations with them. We've been having conversations with Oak Lodge Water Services as well because though we're not overflowing to the river there, we have the same issue. We have huge INI problems in that area and the rates. They're going to start doing their master plan, and they're going to look at what their rates need to be to treat all this stormwater, all this stormwater. So we have about a third of our town that's on Oak Lodge, and we have the same issue there. So it really is the old town. We need to start, to keep rates down long run, we need to start getting this rainwater out of our sewer pipes.
And creating strategic partnerships, hint, hint.
No, absolutely. And like I say, West is, and they can, maybe if they want, they can come up and talk a little bit. They are in the middle of their, they are in their water-
Sign some documents.
They're in the middle of their master plan right now, and they are actually studying this very thing. Where's that threshold of the right size of treatment? You know, where's the cost? You know, if you spend $100,000 to deal with INI and you drop the cost of the plant by $500,000, just using some round numbers, that makes sense. And that's, that's what they're working on right now and figuring out, so, yep.
Do you want to say anything?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Chris Story. I'm the Assistant Director of West. And Director Wynton is absolutely correct. This is an issue of regional concern, and I would suggest to you that you are not alone. We have done a study that's looked at what we call pipe sheds, where we look at, you know, funnels of pipes coming down towards the plant. We have 17 different pipe sheds within our system, and the problem is all over. We see it Happy Valley, we see it in Milwaukee, we see it in West Lynn, we see it in Oregon City. Because it's not sexy to fix pipes under the ground. So it tends to, the can gets kicked down the road in a lot of communities. The challenge is, the problem doesn't stay static. Where you are right now, the pipes are going to continue to deteriorate. So you replace one section, other sections are still allowing in a great deal of INI, which is infiltration and inflow, which is sort of the industry term for it. So we have been doing a study around what's the best way to solve that problem. The treatment plant during the winter is usually running at about four to five times the flow that we get during the summer. And like he said, we have to, we pay for that. That's electricity and chemicals and all sorts of other things. We have a preliminary report. This has been shared with our advisory committee and the Board of County Commissioners, but we're in the process of finalizing it, where we looked at an estimate of what the cost would be just to treat the INI that we're seeing from the systems coming in. And the number is horrifying. It's north of $600 million of construction. We can drop that number by several hundred million dollars by working with our partner jurisdictions to see a reduction in INI and what the rainwater is.
On fixing our problems.
So it's certainly a collective challenge that we're all going to have to work on together. We certainly have been trying to support Gladstone in the conversations they're having with the ENQ. We shared that West experienced the MAO process back in 2008 when the Kellogg plant was having real challenges. Our timeline was tighter. We had 18 months to construct additional treatment capacity, and it resulted in a crash program and pretty significant rate increases. We actually ended up doubling our rates in three years to be able to construct additional capacity to make sure that we were not violating our Clean Water Act permit. And so we've reached out, I believe our engineering staff has been connecting with you to talk about ways we can partner to try and support you in bringing this home in the best way possible.
Thank you very much for your help.
Great, now I'm going to leave.
So there is no further questions. We look forward to having more conversations in a couple of months, yes.
All right. You. Anything else on that? Jackie, we're good?
Nope, I think we're okay with that one. Thank you.
All right, the next item is the second reading of Ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code related to temporary structures. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Our city attorney, David, was not present at the last meeting. Him and I have had some conversation into some language that is in the current ordinance. And we would like to provide one option for the counsel to consider before you move forward with your second reading. If you don't want to make this change, that's fine, but we feel like there's some validity to what we're going to propose. And if you look at Section 3 on page 42, under Building, Siting, and Design General Standards of the Gladstone Municipal Code, on Item C, it says, "This section shall apply to all temporary structures in place before, on, or after the effective date of this section." We would like it to say that this section shall apply to all temporary structures in place after the effective date of this section. So essentially, what you would be doing is grandfathering in the temporary structures and that our enforcement then becomes complaint-driven, where we're working with our staff on the complaints that are filed. I think David might want to speak a little bit to the prospective aspect of why he would prefer that we do grandfather in on this ordinance?
Sure. So in a land use context, since these are being proposed as part of your development code, generally speaking, changes that you make to regulate the use of land, how people build a house, how people, you know, zoning for a particular property, all manner of things that come under your development code. Generally speaking, when you make a change, those things are applicable to things going forward. So, you know, if you said basically much like this, you know, that you'd have temporary structures and you're going to regulate them in a certain way that normally, and this is pretty consistent with how most jurisdictions would do it, that that regulation would be applied prospectively, so to things that come in the future. It's not to say you can't do this. I mean, that's, legally, you can go ahead and say, well, not, despite there may be, you know, things that have happened, we still want to regulate those things. But as I said to Jackie, and she indicated that generally, when you're talking about changes to the development code, those are things that occur, and those changes will be applicable to things that happen after it's effective. So that, making that change would make it consistent with how virtually the rest of your development code operates.
And I think it would help resolve some of the concerns that we've been hearing about people that currently have temporary structures on their sites. And I know there's still a maintenance issue and a nuisance issue that we will have to work through in the enforcement piece. But I think that that would help relieve some of the discontent that you've been experiencing through this process. So that would be our recommendation, is that you essentially are just removing three words from Item C to say that it would be after the effective date of this section.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do a hypothetical question. So say a structure, steel structure, is already not in compliance with current code. So say it's, quite a few areas in Gladstone don't have sidewalks. But generally, there's still a city right away from the curb, five, six, seven, eight feet into that person's grass, essentially. So say they were to build a structure that went over the, their property line towards the street, still on, essentially, if you were to look at it, say that's their property still, that would still be out of compliance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that wouldn't, making this change wouldn't affect something like that where you're talking about what amounts to an encroachment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Do you want us to consider making a motion for this one change? Or do we, if everyone's in favor of it, do the second reading, including this change?
The latter is just fine. The requirement under your charter would just be that we read aloud what the change is, and you don't need to have a separate motion and vote on that. You certainly can if you want to, but if there's consensus on it, I would recommend going ahead with the second reading, and we would just call out the change specifically as to what that is.
Okay, but before we do that, I want to make sure that we're heading in the direction that counsel wants.
I don't have a problem, huh? That would be fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too, if it's good.
Counsel Mills?
Yeah, I tried to figure out a way to do grandfathering last time, and I think this addresses it probably. It probably leaves in place some things we would rather not were there, but you have to kind of balance the good and the bad with this. And I think on balance, this is probably a good way to go.
Okay, Counsel Tracy.
I'm good with that.
Okay, then could you go ahead?
So call for the second reading?
Calling for the second reading. Do we need to make a motion for the second reading, or I can just call it?
Uh, sure, go ahead and make a motion.
Would someone make a motion?
Sheriff Merritt, I'd like, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve ordinance amending, ordinance 1482, and ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code pertaining to temporary structures and reaffirming all remaining provisions of the Gladstone Municipal Code with the change from Section 3, subsection C, to state, "This section shall apply to all temporary structures in place after the effective date of this section."
I'll second it. Motion was made by Counsel McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese, to complete the second reading of Ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, temporary structures, with the one modification to Section 3C to read, "This section shall apply to all temporary structures in place after the effective date of this section."
And just one question. Under our charter, what is the effective date of something we adopt tonight? Is it tonight, or is it 30 days?
30 days, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion has been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, could you please do the second reading?
Actually, I think you just did it, but we can-
Oh, is that it? Well, you usually make it really long.
No, the fact that you've done what you need to do, Mayor.
All right, so then do we need to do another motion? We're good?
You're done.
All right, okay.
I'd like to add, in the course of us reviewing all of this, I wanted to highlight that there is a provision in Chapter 1782 that allows the city administrator, the planning commission, or city council to waive, reduce, or defer fees related to a land use process. And if such a matter does arise that we've been working on regarding a specific piece of property here, it may be that I ask for just cause by the council to allow for waiving that if the person has to go through the variance process to get it into compliance. However, I think with the adjustment that we made this evening, that may not be necessary. But I did want you to know that there is the ability to waive or reduce in the future date on variance applications.
Will that be a planning commission issue first, then come to council, or come directly to council?
If they have to file for a variance, it will go through the planning commission first, and that should be it.
Okay, I just want to make sure people understand that, yes.
And it also came to light today that we have something called, loosely called a mini-variance, which is a-
An adjustment, yes.
An adjustment, a lower-priced variance for certain classifications of minor adjustments, which require-
20%.
No more than 20% decrease in the, in the variance, for example.
Correct.
So a five-foot variance, 20%, you could knock it down to a four-foot variance, I mean, a four-foot setback, excuse me. Five-foot setback could be reduced to a four-foot setback under that application. And the fee currently was, as I recall, $238.50, I think.
Correct.
Okay.
And that would just be administrative? That wouldn't have to come to planning?
I'm not sure. The adjustment, I think, is administrative, but I think it's the variance that goes to planning.
That goes to planning, okay.
The adjustment is technically subject to an appeal, but yes, you're right. That would be done at the staff level.
Okay. All right, anything else on this one? All right, next item is number five, contract amendment to American Institute of Architects, AIA Document Agreement for the Gladstone Civic Center. Staff?
Well, this is an exciting project. I'll have Kim here, our project manager. I did want to make one correction. On your agenda, under item number five, it says that it's in the amount of $12,550,000. It is actually $12,565,338, which is correct in your packet in the contract documents, but I wanted to make sure that that correction's made on the agenda. So David and Kim and I have had the pleasure of getting this contract ready for your approval tonight, and I think it would be good if Kim could go through the process that got us here tonight, and then we could answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Jackie. Hello, everyone. It's so nice to have a consistent group of faces, having worked with you all for this past year. When I was writing this up, I was kind of rechecking my date, given, in reading it and writing, how quickly this has gone and how efficient and focused you've all been on this process. So I just want to commend staff as well as counsel in your deliberations about this and very thoughtful and insightful input into the project. And just the background, it started in February. We issued an RFP for design-build teams. We received five, interviewed three, picked PNC Construction with SEA Architects to advance the project. On May 5th, you approved that team and allowed staff to enter negotiations with that team and to advance through a Phase 1 period of due diligence with that group of folks. Through that period, what they did is they were, had the opportunity to spend some real money on the project, hire some folks to do some due diligence work over that period of time, with the understanding that what they were to deliver you was a $12 million building, a building that cost $12 million that met the program that had been outlined in the RFP, and that the, would do that through a series of meetings with staff to refine the design, really understand how the building would work, what would fit on the site, understand your code better, and really make sure that they're not selling you snake oil here. So they've done that, that period, that, gone through that process. And on November 7th, the design-build team came back to you with a $12 million base project, a project that could be built for $12 million along with a list of potential enhancements. Originally, when you approved the project, counsel had set aside a separate bucket, we'd like to refer to it as, of $775 million of enhancements.
$775,000.
Thousands, millions, hundreds.
We just about had a heart attack.
I must be in Gladstone. You guys pay attention to the money here.
How many, we realize?
Oh, no, you're good. Oh, you're not so surprised?
Oh, wow.
I have more room here. Okay, so we had this bucket. I'll just call it the bucket. So anyway, so on November 7th, the design-build team came back to you, outlined those lists of enhancement projects, gave you background on them, kind of a little more details. You guys went away for a week, came back on the 13th, and requested what amounted to $566,560 worth of enhancements, and authorized, what we've done then is now move those enhancements into what we're calling the base project that you're approving today. And so what you're approving today is this Exhibit A Design-Bill Amendment. A draft of this document was issued with the RFP, and what we're basically have done now is, based on the due diligence and the list of things that the team has done, is in my summary memo. But what we're doing is filling in the blanks now of the agreed-upon projects. So what you're doing, the action you'll be taking today will be approving the base project, the contract sum of $12,565,338. You cut me like, and the contract time, we had originally had substantial completion date of February 14th. I think we all fell in love with that date for a very obvious reason. But one thing that we do need to correct- But one thing that we do need to correct in the presentation today is that two of the enhancements that were listed on the enhancements table came with fourteen-day additional time to build. So one of them was associated with the larger lobby, and the other one was associated with making it a taller building. And the contractor in that approval table had noted a fourteen-day additional duration for that work. And so rather than the February 14th date, we're recommending a change to March, I didn't write that down on my notes.
Or 2020.
March 16th. Thank you. March 16th date for substantial completion. What that does is, in the contract, there's also what's called liquidated damages. So if we exceed, in a staggered way, if we exceed those dates, the city's entitled to some additional money if they were not, if those delays were not foreseeable, or were foreseeable, or were not caused by the city's actions. So if you didn't change, if you didn't move the goalposts on them, then they need to meet that substantial completion date. Not to be confused with the move-in date, it's a, but substantial completion is an industry standard term that we use in construction. To be very clear, that's when you guys could move into the bill, or the building can be occupied for its intended use. But the city's move-in would happen after that. It also, the Exhibit A approves the personnel, the designated project manager. You've met Will. He's been at a couple of these meetings. So he'd be the designated project manager for PNC Construction. And then there's a placeholder for a site superintendent that will be established prior to startup construction. And then the cost-of-the-work section of this document is basically the terms associated with the project expenses. Happy to go into the weeds on those if you have questions on those. But it's more of the details on the terms of the funds. So that's my summary. Did I miss something, other than how much money this is going to cost?
I'll just add that you have roughly $209,000 remaining for enhancement. And what we would propose to do then is, we're going to schedule another community open house after the first of the year and ask the community what enhancements they would like to see in the larger lobby and the community room. And we've also engaged the Gladstone Historical Society. And the architects will be meeting with them after the first of the year to get input from them. So we would bring those recommendations back to you at a future meeting. Of course, we might also recommend that you allow, within my spending authority, so we're not nickel-and-diming you with everything that we want to purchase. But that's the intent with the remaining enhancement money. Any questions?
Only one. In the plan I glanced over, it talked about the fire protection systems in the police station, where it can be sprinkled.
Mm-hmm.
Is the police station the only building that's going to be sprinkled?
I don't know. Jackie, does your staff matter? No, I'm kidding. Big kidding. Of course, yes. Everything will be built to code in the building. So there are some additional provisions that are in the public safety portion of it that are above and beyond code. But everything in the, both, in the whole project will be to code.
Okay. Back to the question. City Hall will be sprinkled?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
That's code. All right. Any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion, then?
I'd love to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to approve, is that the one I want to make?
Mm-hmm.
Exhibit A to the AIA Document Agreement for the Gladstone Civic Center in the amount of $12,565,000, a million. So my, the correction would be $12,565,338.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel McMahon and seconded by Counselor Tracy to authorize the city administrator to approve Exhibit A to the American Institute of Architects, called AIA, Document Agreement for the Gladstone Civic Center in the amount of $12,565,338. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you very much.
I'm never going to live that one down. I'm starting to say... I have to. Yeah.
All right. Next item is, where are we? Number seven?
Six.
Six. Excuse me, I put a check on the wrong one. Number six, City of Gladstone Second Amendment to Personal Services Agreement. Consider approval of the Second Amendment to an existing agreement for project management for Shields Obletz Johnson of the Gladstone Civic Center project. For, yes.
So as you recall, when we first started this project, we went out for an RFP for project management, and we got a phased-in cost estimate because we didn't know if we were going to need a project manager for all three phases. But Kim has been brilliant for us on this project. We have money budgeted for her to continue on through the construction and occupancy phase. And so David's prepared a second amendment to the existing agreement that you have that we would like you to approve to keep her on as project manager.
Any questions for staff? Will someone make a motion, please?
Merritt, be happy to make a motion that we approve the Second Amendment to an existing agreement for project management of the Gladstone Civic Center for Shields Obletz Johnson to continue as the owner's representative to complete Phase 2 design permit construction and authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counsel McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese, to approve the Second Amendment to an existing agreement for project management of the Gladstone Civic Center for Shields Obletz Johnson to continue as the owner's rep to complete Phase 2 design permit construction, authorizing the city administrator to sign the agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Next item is number seven, Council Representative for the Willamette Falls LOX Project.
You authorized $2,500 towards the project at your last meeting. You also asked if you could have representation. I inquired with West Lynn, and they said, sure. It's a non-voting member. And so at this point, we'd like to know who that would be from the council to attend those meetings?
I've been involved so far.
And then why don't you stay on?
So unless somebody else wants to step up and...
Well, Neil's not here, so...
Well, then...
I'd like to nominate him.
(laughing).
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. Stay.
Does that work?
Yes.
All right. So we'll go ahead and do that. Next item is number eight, Discussion of the Fire Chief and Police Chief Recruitment Process. That's why there's a lot of blue out there.
Okay, so what you have in your packet is a proposed timeline and a job description for the fire chief and the police chief positions. We're very fortunate that we are going to have Jeff Smith and Kim Yamashita here for me, for at least six to eight months. I need that. I need the continuity. I need the stability with all the projects we have going on. And I need them helping us and you fill these positions. I do want to tell you, though, that we put the wrong fire chief job description in your packet.
Oh.
And we realized that today. And I'll have Tammy hand these out to you. And the main qualifier in this is under the education. The one that you have in your packet does not talk about a college degree. So the one that we're handing out, this is the job description that we used when we hired our first full-time paid fire chief. And we also had to remove one reference to a lieutenant in the job description because there is no lieutenant in the department. So under qualifications, you will see that we added a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university, and a master's is preferred in fire administration. However, you can get the minimum ten years of progressive experience in that. What took us a while to start the recruitment is, one, we didn't know Jeff was leaving until most recently. But also, we had to update the job descriptions. We just went through a citywide compensation study increase that we had to let the council know about before we could post what we were going to recruiting for in the salary range for the fire chief and the police chief. And also, we had the police and fire levies that we were focusing on. So with all of those behind us now, we have the holidays coming up. But we feel very confident that if we start next week with the recruitment process, that we can meet our timelines here and have somebody onboard by mid-June. What I'd kind of like to know, too, is, I would like the council to participate in the selection process. And I'm assuming that you would want to do that. And if that's true, you can, you can talk about that now. I know we have two new counselors coming on in January that will also be part of the process. And so if you had any other suggestions or questions in relation to the next fire chief or police chief recruitment, we wanted to get your input before we went out and started recruiting for it.
Any questions for staff? Do you want a motion from us to go ahead and accept this and move forward?
I think so. I think, and that motion then would, I'm assuming, we would like to use the one that has the education qual...
The new one?
Yes. Qualifications that are in that timeline.
Okay. Will someone make a motion? Pat?
I've been making all of them.
There you go.
So I'm going to just keep on rolling. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the process and timeline identified above for both the fire chief and the police chief recruitment, with the addition that we use the updated fire chief job description that we were just given today.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel McMahon, seconded by Counselor Neese, to approve the process and timeline identified with the new fire chief position description for both the fire and police chief recruitment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. All right.
Thank you.
So last is business carried forward. Do you have anything?
I have nothing further.
All right. Would someone like to adjourn the meeting?
I'd be happy to.
(laughing). I am staring right at you.
So moved. Or I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Counsel McMahon, seconded by Counselor Tracy, to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:34 PM.